Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Record of attendance, Linda's good? Any declarations of conflict of interest? Approval of the agenda, additions or deletions? So we have 9A, requests for decision vendors. 9B, requests for decision Canada 150. 9C, Nova Scotia moves. 9D, fireworks. Did you add all of them? Okay. Yes. Thank you. Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. So we have Housing Nova Scotia with us today. And when you're finished, we're just gonna, we have a quick meeting inside and we'll call them in camera and then we'll come back out. So, welcome. You can, Dan, you can introduce yourself and then introduce your team.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the invite to come down and talk a little bit around affordable housing today. My name is Dan Troke. I'm the President and CEO for Housing Nova Scotia, which is the housing delivery arm of the provincial government, both around our affordable housing, public housing, social housing, but also around a number of grant programs and nursing home and daycare programs as well. With me is Jamie Vigiloro as the Director of Western Housing Authority. Also with me today is Earl Melkey, who is running our programs, our grant programs at a Middleton office, as well as Stephane Richard, who is our Director of Community Relations. So each of my team members will come up and talk to various aspects of the, of the slides. And at any point in time, if you need us to stop, please let us know. We're always happy to answer questions along the way. Yes?
Sure. Absolutely. So again, my name is Dan Troke. I'm the CEO for Housing Nova Scotia. We've got a little bit of a slide deck to talk about affordable housing and some of the housing issues that we see emerging in and around Yarmouth.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Okay, so as Dan said, my name is Jamie Vigilolo. I'm the Director of the Western Regional Housing Authority. So I'm down in this area at least once a month to meet with the board members, dealing with the affordable housing aspects of the area. So I'm gonna walk through a couple of slides here. The first few slides are some data and numbers that we've received through a number of meetings with other organizations such as, for example, Choice. And there's a study or research stats report that was done that we can leave here with them, I believe, if they wanted to see that. So this is where the numbers came from out of this particular report. So you'll see on the slide on the screen there, Affordable Housing in Rural Nova Scotia, population and dwelling unit counts in 2011 compared to 2006. And you can see there's a fairly substantial decline of 5.6%. Total number of census families in private households was 1,845, and you can see the breakdown of those there. Primarily, there's two persons in the households or less. Total households by tenure, owner or renter, you can see the total number of households is 3145, and it's split about 50/50, it's pretty close as far as the percentages are concerned. And then the total number of households spending 30% or more of their income for shelter costs, which is where we come in. Individuals spending more than 30% of their households, we consider them to be in core need, and then, so that's where we offer the affordable housing program type depending on their need. Percentage of tenant households in subsidized housing, 21%. And then percent of tenant households spending 30% or more of their household income for shelter is quite high, 54.8% is high. I'm not sure if there's a number that can substantiate that or give some context around how that relates to other counties, but that would be something that we would definitely want to be looking at. 54.8 seems fairly high. So the Housing Authority, so myself as Director of Western, I'm obviously the Director of Western Regional Housing. There are five housing authorities within the province, under Housing Nova Scotia, for approximately close to 11,500 family and senior units within the province. So within, sorry.
Jim, did you have a question that just, I don't know if it's a slide before, sorry there, Jamie?
Oh, so in subsidized house... So I'm not exactly sure what they would include, what this report included, like its power and water and utilities, but I would expect it does. I don't know, maybe Stephane, do you know?
Yeah.
So it includes the power and utilities? Yeah, so utilities and actual shelter itself. So within Nova Scotia, as I described on this slide, you can see there's five housing authorities throughout the province, representing or managing 11,500 units, which are owned and managed, or owned by Housing Nova Scotia. And you can see the size of Western, and then of course, the Yarmouth location. In Western, we have about 2,100, I believe it's the next slide, yeah, you can see here, we have 2,162 units throughout the Western Regional Housing Authority. Number that may be of interest, it was for me, I'm new to the Housing Authority within the last five years, I'm going on my fifth year now, I can, so maybe not as new as I used to be, but when I first started, I was kinda shocked, not kinda, I was shocked, to see that the number for families was 25%, and seniors was 75%, because I would have expected that was the reverse, that there would have been a higher number of families that were being supported by public housing funds than seniors. But as you can see there, it's substantially the reverse. And then you can see the number that CMHC sets the household income limit standards for individuals to be able to qualify or be in core need. And you can see there, well, for a one-bedroom, the income limit is 30, on a three-bedroom is 42,000. And then you get into the Yarmouth, specific Yarmouth location, so in the town of Yarmouth, we have 152 families. So as I described earlier, there's 2,100 units in Western, and 25% of those are families. So you can see that of the thousand units, or sorry, 500 units of families, we have 152 family units here in the town of Yarmouth. And you can see the addresses there of each of the dwellings. And you're probably all familiar with a lot of them, if not all of them. And then on the senior side, we have 219 in the town of Yarmouth, and you can see the locations there as well. Our waitlist numbers are also there, so you'll probably be interested in that number, that's not something that you would normally know or see. So in the, for family units, we have 152 family units, as we saw on the previous slide, and you've got 58 families currently on the waitlist, waiting for housing. Essentially, we turn over about 25% of our units a year, so that usually means you've got about a two- to three-year waitlist, or a wait time, to be able to get into housing. And it could be substantially less than that, it's not usually more than that. It just depends on the location and size of the waitlist by location.
And earlier, you mentioned, you mentioned income, for, I think, family, 342,000. What happens if the family income increases, so you get past the threshold?
Well, if they do get past the threshold, their income, their rent is based on their income.
Okay.
So they can't exceed the threshold, but then at some point, when they get close to the market rents, so if their, their rent geared to income now becomes very close or could exceed what actual market rent would be, well then it makes more sense now for them to find other accommodations out in the private sector.
Yeah, I saw what happened in, I think, City of Toronto, did you see that one?
No.
Where they actually mix, people are in there making upwards of $120,000 in, but they were, I think the excuse they used, or the rationale they use is they're helping subsidize the rents for other people because they're at market or just below market rent, so.
Yes, I don't know if you're referring to the development in Richmond, I think it's a Richmond, Region Park development in, in Toronto?
Yeah.
It's mixed income, mixed use, which is, and I can let Dan speak to that if you like?
Yeah, because I think it's great.
Yeah, I'll just take a second. What happened in Toronto is, the City of Toronto actually runs all the social housing, so it's not a provincial or federal at that point. So the city had about 3,000 units in this neighborhood, and the units were in need of substantive repair. They didn't have a lot of money to put towards it, but the land was very valuable. So they actually did a request for proposals, and a developer came along and agreed to replace all 3,000 units, as long as they got enough density to build probably 10 times the original number of units on the site. The good part about it is they did look at mixing affordable and market units in one location. One of the challenges, though, in some places, they created all the affordable units on one street or largely within one building, so you still had some stigmatization that was going on as a result of that. But they're still only through, I think, phase one of about three phases of development. I will say, the other part that happened here is the land was so valuable, I mean, the developer made a substantial amount of money off of, off of that. And so there are many, many high-end users certainly in that neighborhood. Cutback substantially on police requirements, I mean, they actually pulled the policing, the policing, it wasn't a station, it was a modified station in the neighborhood out, and the density has increased such that there's way more people on the street now, particularly after dark, which actually is a policing piece in which it's helped. The, the part that I think is a little different is, a lot of the units that were sold at market tended to be homeownership versus a lot of the folks who were still living in social housing were rental, and so you actually still have a little bit of a divide on that as well. But it's still only phase one of about three phases, and I think they're making some substantive changes based upon what they've already learned in the first part of that. We're looking in Metro to do a development, it's called Bloomfield, which is a school site, it's three and a half acres, where Housing Nova Scotia actually was the successful bidder in acquiring the property, we're working through a development agreement now.
Yeah, we have a high school for you, but...
Well, listen, I'm always happy to talk about them, but what we need to look at is what's the capacity then for that site to become sustainable? So obviously, the costs associated with it, with the costs of money that are going in in order to keep it going. And, you know, there's, there's, in some cases, sites that have a school on it are great location-wise, sometimes there are challenges, and sometimes environmentally there's other challenges you have to deal with as well. But, you know, my, my view is we're always open for a conversation if you think there's a partnership opportunity, even if we have a private sector partner. We've had a number of schools that have been converted over the last number of years where a private sector developer's been able to come in, and through collaboration between the municipality and the province, we've been able to make developments work.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Okay, so, yeah, so there's 58 families currently on the waitlist for the town of Yarmouth, and we have 73 families on the waitlist for the senior units. Then also of interest, you'll note that we also maintain a list of individuals that are not seniors, not families, we classify them as the non-elders, and usually they're single individuals, male or female. And the reason why we maintain that list is in the event that we might have a unit that there is no waitlist for, we can provide them housing. And so you can see on this particular list, we have 30 individuals that have been approved through the committee, through the application process, to go on a waitlist for any unit that may come available that no one else is waiting for. Because the age, the age limit on elderly would be 58 or above. Okay, so I'm now gonna turn it over to Earl Melkey. He's our Program Manager for the services, for housing services, and I'll turn it over to Earl.
Thanks, Jay. So we've got this broken out into components, Jamie deals with people that are, that need housing, so the senior units, family units. My area is for people that are living in their own home, for seniors and families that need to do repairs to their own home, or, so we have a variety of programs. Basically, our territory, the territory I'm responsible for is from Halifax, Hans County line, down along the South Shore, Yarmouth, and through the valley, so there's, including West Hans. So there's seven and a half counties there, fairly large territory. We have an inspector and a caseworker that's responsible for Yarmouth, Digby Yarmouth-Schelburne. We do, we'll go to the next slide, sorry, Dan. We have household income limits. So in order to qualify for the program, there, there are some obviously parameters, and I'm sure most of yous have heard about the programs or know someone who's accessed them. They apply through the office at Middleton, through the regional office. They have to own and occupy their home, so they need that deed in their name. If, if an elderly person signs it over to maybe one of their children for estate planning, we can work with them to get a recorded life interest or something to that effect. You need to be within a certain income to qualify. For instance, for seniors, it goes by the number of bedrooms occupied for seniors or families, but for one-bedroom occupied, it's $30,000 per year or below, which has increased over time. So there may be people that have applied in the past that did not qualify, however, the household income limits climb. I remember at one time, the limits were 14,000, now they're 30,000. So they have gone up over time. We've got a waiting list, a fairly healthy waiting list, which shows the programs are being utilized. We will get to everybody, we're trying, our goal is to get to everybody within a year. So that's our target. If it's an emergency, if it's a furnace, or if it's a roof leaking down through into wiring or electrical, we will prioritize those applications. In terms of, I probably won't get into all the individual programs because we have, we have a wide variety of programs. We have, the way we can classify them are there are programs for seniors, and there's programs for families, and there's programs for people with disabilities. So the grants are up to $6,500. We have forgivable loans, which, which go up to $16,000 per unit. So you can have a, actually, you can have a senior or a family who also have a disabled family member that can qualify for $16,000, forgivable money, and if they have disability-related repairs, there could be an additional $16,000 under that program. We have done up to $32,000 per household, depending on their need. Anything over $25,000, we do record a mortgage. Anything other than that, it's just a promissory note that they sign. We do come across properties which are beyond the scope of repair. And, and it's not often, but there are times when you're just not gonna put good money into bad, and people have to, you know, there are other housing options, whether it's, whether it's a rental situation, whether it's a mortgage through Housing Nova Scotia, what be it? So here we have a slide of the, these are the numbers for Yarmouth County, which also include the town. I have broken it out somewhat more. The total amount, so this is for one year, this is $615,000, so it's been put into the economy around here. And that's all through grants and forgivable loans. Considerable amount of money, you might not see it going on, but when you drive down the road and you see work being done to houses, and you're thinking, how can they afford that? A lot of times, it's through our programs. The town of Yarmouth would, would account for roughly one-third of that, so you're looking at around $205,000 in the town of Yarmouth. The other thing that I will add, before I hand it over to Stephane with the strategy, we're also, we're also responsible for the operating agreements for the housing cooperatives. So many of you are familiar with the co-op in the South End, Four Corners, they amalgamated four, four co-ops, it's been over 10 years now. They have 123 units, they're a major landlord in the town. We, they own and they operate it, their board are responsible for the operations of co-op, the members elect the board. We provide funding, we provide assistance to try and keep them operating. Having said that, there, there are some vacancies there now, and we are going to help them with some additional funding to do some repairs to their vacant units. Jamie, through the Housing Authority, has people on his waiting list, there's a housing crunch, you have vacant units that could use repairs that these people can move into. So part of the meeting that we were at with the Choice Group, people were connecting dots, and it worked very well. So it was, we were good to have representation from the co-op, a number of nonprofits, from the town here, from the Housing Authority, so that worked well. The other co-op is Four Shoe Co-op, which is out in Hebron, just on the outskirts of town, which is functioning quite well. They also receive funding through the province to do major capital upgrades, so we've, we've assisted them within the last few years. The other thing you may see going on in the private sector, and that's what we would encourage councils to partner with private sector to potentially access some of our affordable housing money. We have Ocean Breeze, I'm sure you're familiar with them, well, they not only serve the high end of the market, but they've come in as a player to serve some of the subsidized housing market. So they've put in a four-unit project out in Hebron, and a four-unit, it's like the row housing typically geared for seniors, at the bottom of Havelock Drive in the South End. They're coming in with rents at $675 a month with heat, lights included, which is, which is pretty good for what, the type of people that we see that need, need housing. Another proponent, private developer, was Scott Ritchie, who, who received funding for 12 units through our program. So we are going around the different municipalities at their request, we are explaining about some of our programs, but it, it is, it is up to the group here and their economic development to try and generate some activity with their private developers and tap into our programs. We're able to come down at any time and talk about what, what funding we can provide. Right now, typically, it's $25,000 per unit, with the potential of a rent supplement on top. But that wraps up my presentation, my portion. Does anyone have any questions? We're all good? Hope I didn't take too much time.
No, you're, you're good. I, I have a question, don't know where, are you speaking, Dan? Are you gonna speak?
Sure.
No, I, I just didn't know if you were all finished.
We have one additional, Stephane Richard will take over from here. And I have Mrs. Carr, if anyone is interested, I'll just hand them out later.
Good afternoon, everybody. Just let me know if time is running out. I, I don't, don't see a clock anywhere, but I'll try to be brief for the rest of the presentation, and Dan can jump in at any point if you have any specific questions. What I'll do is just speak at a broader or higher level from a corporate strategic perspective, and also try to address, or start talking about some of the challenges that are, that you are facing as a community. So as you know, in 2013, we released the Provincial Housing Strategy, and essentially, it was to, what came out of it was the need, as a provincial agency for Housing Nova Scotia, to change the way we operate, kind of start expanding our focus, our mandate, to address today's challenges. So you see here on the screen the key pillars of the housing strategy. So what has happened since then? While we're in, in the midst of developing a multi-year strategic plan, many of our, the results of our activities, you know, only happen after a few years. So, so it's important, whether it's capital costs, capital projects, to, to really plan long-term. Many of our investments are long-term. We appointed an advisory committee that is composed of representatives from private sector, nonprofit, we have two tenant representatives on the interim advisory committee, and that helps us get those voice at the table when, when we plan our, our business plan and discuss our outcomes and key activities. We, we also examine, as I mentioned, one of the, what was clear out of the housing strategy is housing needed to, to look at the broader picture, focus on homeownership, focus on partnership. Well, we need to be ready as an organization to, to support those activities. There's a lot of projects, I think it was mentioned here, you know, what we're doing at Bloomfield, we're also looking at a development in the town of Windsor, we're doing neighborhood revitalization in Truro, also a new passive house project, if, if you've heard of the term. It's quite innovative and quite exciting, actually, and you'll certainly hear in, in the months and years to come. And we're also working, and that's part of, of my job, my focus, is working with communities, municipalities, and nonprofit groups, and here, you're most likely familiar with Choice, with, I believe, regroup some 50 stakeholders interested and involved in the, in the housing sector. So we've been working with, with these groups. You know, when we look at affordable housing in Halifax, is, is a little different than the reality in rural Nova Scotia. And what I put on the, on this slide is just to help you understand kind of the, you know, some of the challenges that are primarily causing the affordable housing issues, and we'll distribute some, some copies of the presentation so you can have more time to, to go through that. But for example, you know, the high utility and transportation costs, and the lack of transportation sometimes make it very, very difficult. It's all added costs. When we talk about core housing need, well, it's shelter, it's utility costs, but it's also, how can I get to, to work? And if I have to pay for a car, and if we have two cars, and we're working at a minimum wage, it makes it very, very difficult. So what can we do about it? Well, first of all, recognizing that the reality in rural Nova Scotia, and towns and cities or urban settings are different. What's really critical is establishing, and first of all, recognizing that no one, no single organization can solve all the housing problems, so we need to work together, you know, maximizing existing programs from the federal government, provincial, also municipalities. And from, from a municipality, there's different tools that are at your disposal to encourage affordable housing. We were talking about Toronto a few minutes ago, well, you know, new approach to development, building smaller and well-designed homes. That matched kind of the, the tenure that we're seeing, our changes in demographic. We're, we're starting the conversation about micro-lofts in Halifax, if you've read the paper in recent days. Well, it's, it's all helpful in reducing the, the cost of acquiring or cost of rent. Considering building conversion, you know, densification is also one solution to address affordable housing. So where do we go from here? We've been meeting with, as I mentioned, some community groups here. There's a lot of tremendous work that's been happening, a lot of good information, this, this report that we cited earlier around the statistics for, for housing. So, you know, from our standpoint, is, is we want to be there to, to support, we want to help. The leadership comes from the community, and we're really excited to see that this is happening, and we wanna, we wanna be there as much as we can to, to support these efforts. You know, I think the, the groups here are talking about developing a, a housing strategy for, for the community. They've already identified some, some key priorities, and some of them, for example, the co-op that was mentioned earlier, is certainly something that we're looking into. You know, neighborhood improvement initiatives, pilots that we've done in Truro, and you probably heard recently, a few weeks ago, Glaze Bay was, was going to be our second project for, for neighborhoods. So those are, are tools that we're trying to, to come up with and to support communities, and, and really, you know, Housing Nova Scotia being a partner. So I'll let Dan kind of conclude with the Neighborhood Improvement Initiative and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Stephane. So just quickly, what I'll do is I'll touch on, as Stephane mentioned, the initial Neighborhood Improvement Initiative basically came from the idea that we have municipalities, citizen groups who are trying to do things within their neighborhoods, and one of the things that we looked at is, could we supply a program that would see, you know, some sprucing up, for lack of a better word, in certain streets or in an entire neighborhood? entire neighborhood? But we looked for partnerships with municipalities, we looked for partnerships even with the private sector. So the first initiative that moved forward was Truro, it was Alice Street in Truro. We had a private sector developer who bought a school, and we had a community, actually, who was actively trying to fix up a playground. We were able to go in and do some work on some buildings that were owned by the province, as well as each of the homeowners who were in that community had an opportunity to apply for a three-thousand-dollar grant that was intended to fix up the exterior of their home. So many went into doing lawn work, painting, windows, doors, those kinds of things. In addition, they also have, for those who are lower income, so meaning that folks who would be eligible under our grant programs, we're then able to have our inspectors go into their home, look at furnaces, look at wiring, look at things that these other grants, they may or may not be aware of, could be eligible for. The, the second project, which was in Glaze Bay, which was just announced last month, is where we have a large number of homes that were in a neighborhood where there was some disrepair, but you had a community who was really looking to make changes. They were cleaning up empty lots. The municipality was actually taking some units down that were beyond repair. So actually, this week, we're going door-to-door in that neighborhood, letting those folks know that these are the same, there's grants they're eligible for, as well as the three-thousand dollar for each household that is, that is eligible. And with the intent, over, over an eight-month window, we're going to do a blitz where all of those homeowners can get the work done. They can do the work themselves if they'd like, as long as they supply receipts back for the materials that went into their home, we're fine with that. We also have a number of contractors in the neighborhood who've moved forward, who have said, you know, we're going to give some, some volume discounts if we get to do two and three homes on a given street. So these were collaborative approaches in that we had municipalities or groups select a neighborhood. We had a program that we could come in and go door-to-door and direct deliver. It's really good because typically, those folks then go and get local contractors to do the work, or for those who have the capacity, do the work themselves, and the, the materials that they're purchasing, then they can make, go a little bit farther, maybe do a little bit more work. This is really intended to be a start. It's an opportunity where you have a neighborhood where you want to have a street, two streets, a block, that folks can say, we're trying to do something to make a change. Landlords can participate in this as well, but from a landlord perspective, we look for a matching. So if we're going to put a thousand dollars into the front of a building, we expect the landlord to be putting in a thousand dollars. This is their business, income-wise, not quite the same as when you have a, a private individual who owns a home. There are programs, obviously, as you've heard, where we can have private sector developers who might be interested in doing something. So a neighborhood that has an empty lot, a neighborhood that has a, a piece of property that a landlord is looking to do a development on, we can have a conversation with that landlord or that potential developer around some things that we have that might speed the project along. So I'm going to end on that. Just wanted to say thank you again for the invitation. We really are at a point where we have a lot of momentum on a lot of different projects. So as you're having conversations with the development community and the nonprofit sector, please feel free to throw our name around, use it in vain, whatever you might need to do, because we're always happy to come down and have a conversation. We get proposals regularly from both nonprofits and developers, and we, no proposal is anything that we ever discard. We continue to work with those groups to see if we can provide affordable housing. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. So, okay, I'll let you go first.
Good job, Dan, and I haven't seen you since we had the meeting here a couple years ago with the, with the housing crunch.
We had a couple of meetings, that's right.
We had a couple of meetings and...
Some, some big challenges.
Yeah, you went above and beyond, and thank you for that. I was just wondering, Your Worship, we have Natalie in here, we have Tracy from upstairs. This might be an opportunity to get the business community together with housing officials, our planner, maybe from Ergal and the municipality of Yarmouth, get together, see what the programs are, how they can match up with different communities, different buildings in the town of Yarmouth, if it be the Yarmouth High School or repurposing other facilities, because there's always going to be questions on, you know, is it zoned for this? Can we do that? What can I apply for? But if you get all the business people, I'm talking, you talked about Scott Ritchie or all the developers in one room, and go over the programs that you have and, and see what you can come up with. Almost have like a housing summit. So I know you're, like you said, you've met with probably a lot of these people on individual basis, but to get them as a collective group...
Right.
...might not be a bad idea.
Yeah, to do it, to do it locally, you mean?
Yes.
And more than half...
Because if they're, if they're doing a place in, in Pumnaco or Tuskit, there's a very, very good chance that they're going to be buying their building supplies at, you know, Pleasant Supplies or Kent's here in town, or Home Hardware, or, you know, there's a good opportunity that they'll still be buying the, most of their supplies right here in town.
So we pull that together, you come down and do your thing?
Anytime.
Yeah, it's, it's a great idea, actually. It is. The, the Mayor's Congress, we actually are, are doing Housing Symposium. We're putting that together, but that's to go federally.
Right.
Because we need a little bit of buy-in, little bit more buy-in from, from the federal counterparts. So, yeah, let's, let's do that, Phil. Okay. Can we, can, okay, go ahead, Counselor.
I've never dealt with housing before, until probably about three or four weeks ago. We had an incident with some citizens here, and I dealt with David Brewster, one of your caseworkers, and I have to say that it was a great experience working with him. He was really good and got the job done, and, and I just want to say that it was an excellent.
Well, that's...
All right, thank you.
We, we just have something very quickly to discuss in camera.
Okay.
Can I have a motion to go in camera? Just right through here. We won't be long. For the rest of you, we won't be, it'll just be a minute. Yep, perfect.